Special meeting of the Escondido Library Board of Trustees. We're started, started. Okay, great. So it looks like for today, we have a bit on the schedule. Sorry, I'm just trying to find the agenda. All right, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting? Great.
So.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, no worries. And as a reminder, I apologize. Right now, the voting system isn't working because of the socially distance. So we'll just do a hand vote or a voice vote, whatever you prefer.
Okay, and then all in favor?
Motion approved 4-0. Thank you.
Okay. So the next thing on the agenda is, sorry, Dara, did you have something?
Well, this is the first time I've worked on an agenda.
Okay.
And I realized.
Do you mind turning on your.
Right.
Advance, oh, you don't have a list in advance of the agenda items. So they are just, they.
Good, just there.
I apologize.
No, it's okay. I got it. Okay, cool. So I think I'll start then with just an update on our strategic plan. So we released the survey for the strategic plan on October 17th and have had one outreach event so far at the Escondido Grape, what was that, the Grape Day Festival? It wasn't the Grape Day Festival. Go ahead.
Okay, we had the first outreach on the 17th, Sunday, the 17th, at the Grand Avenue.
There we go, Grand Avenue. I was there. I just forgot the name of.
And then we've had two farmers markets and one Halloween thing.
Awesome.
Yeah, so far. And I did one of the Rotary Clubs this morning. And maybe some other people have been thussed up, but that's what I know of so far.
Okay, so it would be great if you could take the survey and then distribute it to the folks that you know in the community. I think that's all we're really asking. Are there any questions about that? Do you, or any more comments?
I'm looking for Debbie's email survey outreach. This is as of.
November 1st, it was 521.
Yeah, okay, what are we at now?
That's about half of what our, you usually get.
Some complications with our Facebook page and being able to put links into our posts. We're limited right now to just images. So when the library gets out of Facebook jail, we'll do another big social media post or try and push it out. We've been posting about it, but it's unfortunate you can't just click and go directly to the survey. So we might end up extending the time of the survey a bit. And we've been to multiple farmers markets. I don't know how many you said, three? And then a pumpkin patch event. The, and we have a swap meet coming up in November. So November 13th, we're sending some staff over to that. So we're hoping to get a big drive and maybe a uptick in especially Spanish surveys.
Yeah, how many, do you know what the breakout is?
Yeah, I don't want to tell you.
Okay.
No, I'm just kidding. It's 521.
Okay.
And we only have, was it eight or 11?
I think it was 11 or 12, yeah.
11 or 12 that were in Spanish.
Okay.
Yeah, but the 521 are English.
Yeah.
Wow, okay. Okay, great. Anything? No comments? Okay.
Is there a chance, you know, our literacy group, those people have, the people in charge, they have a, have quite a connection to the community. Is there any chance that they could push it a little bit for us?
They, yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and they're also, at least one, I think, I think Sheila is participating in our swap meet.
Great. Just one other thing. According to Debbie Joy, the amount of completed surveys we have, it's statistically good. Okay, we're in good shape. We're, but you know, doubling up on that number would be where we want to go.
Okay, great. Well, we're about halfway through, so hopefully we can drum up the more, more people to take it. Okay, well, moving on to the next agenda item. I had requested feedback on, or information on if we've received feedback about the library hours. So I don't know if Katie told you, but we had a conversation at the festival on that Sunday. An individual came up and kind of expressed, you know, that they liked the Sunday hours. So I was wondering if you could provide some input on that, Dara.
Okay, so we looked at February 2020, since that was the last normal month we had. And then we compared it to September 2021 of this year. And we specifically looked at the visits between 5:00 to 7:00 of February and then looked at those visits from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM in September of this year. We had an increase in about five, of about 5%. But until we can do in-person programming, which officially starts this month, we, I don't think we're going to see a full read on the potential increase in those hours. But we'll have a full two months when we go to review next time. As far as patrons in the building, we haven't gotten any, you know, complaints about being closed on Sunday or anything. In fact, we've gotten some positive feedback from students that have been coming in and using our study carols and quiet study space in the evening because San Marcos closes at 4:00. They've been visiting us and staying until close at 8:00 o'clock. And we've also had a couple of parents in the youth services area talk to staff and say it's been great that they actually have time to bring the kids in for assignments after work where, when they, when the close was at 7:00, it was just a little too early to be able to do that.
Just some background information. So the individual who approached us has small children and said that Sunday was really another day for him to visit the library with his kids because the longer hours during the week extend past their bedtime. So he's not able to use the extended hours during the week. So just something to keep in mind. But I'm looking forward to that data when we have it to see. And then we can make a, have another discussion probably about hours. Okay.
How long, how long also has the Pioneer Room been closed? Well, it's open three days a week. Has that been for a long time?
Yeah, we actually extended the Pioneer Room hours when we reopened post-COVID. And there's two evenings now that it's, it's open Tuesday and Thursday evening and then Saturday afternoon. So it gave people a chance that, to come in and do research that may work or have other obligations, whereas previously it was very limited as far as the time to come in. And we still welcome appointments too for people who can't make it into those limited hours. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, great. Dara, do you want to tell us about the interior design plans?
Sure, there's, it's still very early.
Okay.
Catherine visited the library end of August. She's in the process of, or she has created some early design and cost estimates. The city has used that as part of their preliminary application for the infrastructure grant. So that's really all I can share at this point. As we have a better idea of whether or not this is going to be a project to move forward, we'll have more to share.
Okay, great. So what were some of the things that you talked to her about with regard to like what the design looks like?
Predominantly based on our strategic plan, which talked about having more meeting rooms, better lines of sight, shorter shelving. So, and better program, more programming space. What was the other one?
Study rooms.
Oh, yes, study rooms.
Yeah, that's a big.
Because study rooms are a big request and something people are often looking for. And right now, we're limited to three study carols on the second floor.
Okay.
As far as like an individual quiet space.
Interesting. And do you know what like the preliminary cost estimates were?
I.
Okay, all right.
You know, I don't know whether this fits into this, but are we ever planning to open the tarentine room again? Are we? Because I know it used to get quite a bit of community use and, and I liked that because it brought people to the library. And so that was just a question.
Sorry. So the tarentine room is currently only being used by staff for programming. We are currently working on the back end of the software to get it ready for patrons to be able to reserve the room for their own programs. The City of Escondido recently updated the, the fees associated with rental across the entire city. So I've got that information from our liaison at the city. I've input that into the system. There's just a couple of things as far as like the cleaning deposit and other things that we're waiting to be functional. And then we'll begin testing and the plan is to go live in January of '22.
Good, that's really good to hear. Thank you very much, Katie.
Okay, business partnerships.
Okay, so I gave you all a sheet of, with adult services on one side and youth service partnerships on the other side. You can see it's pretty extensive. Youth Services is still partnering with the Children's Discovery Museum. Of course, the Escondido Unified School District and High School District. We are working with San de Gito River Park Rangers for programming. And that's a new program that's been well received where we talk about community hikes and promote our parks as well as try and incorporate storytimes. And actually, our Escondido Park Rangers are starting, as a result of that program, to work with us as well. So they're, it's a great cross collaboration. Our 501 or 500 First Legion, the Star Wars cosplayers, are another group that we work with. They'll be out in May, of course, for May the 4th. Rebel Legion is similar to that, as is Mando Mercs. We still partner regularly with the Grantee Room for our yearly etiquette class for kids. Love on a Leash, volunteers bring the, volunteers bring the dogs in for the kids to read to. EcoVivarium, they provide volunteers and you can read to Bearded Dragons. Rock on Pizza is a local business that's provided us with special coupons and pizza for various youth services programming. And currently, our In-N-Out Cover-to-Cover Book Club is, provides gift certificates for a free hamburger or cheeseburger if, if kids read five books. And my last number on that was 241 participants, so that's a good one. Oh, you know what? He left off. Cal State San Marcos, we have a STEM program we work with them on. And we even just had our first back-in-person program for that. And these are ones that we previously had and we have to get back up and running post-COVID. And that San Diego Council on Literacy, John Paul the Great, and then California State Library Literacy Services. And that's just youth services. So for adult services, actually, well, I didn't think to do that. Can I reflect my screen?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. You want to do it?
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay. So we'll just pull up our, Read Local, Shop Local Partners. They're on our website, so they're easier to see. There's Art Hatch Escape, Burger Bench, Clue Avenue, Cute Cakes, Daydream, also EcoVivarium, The Grantee Room, Jimbo's, Kettle Coffee and Tea, Patio Playhouse, The Persian Cultural Center, Printing Solutions, Rock on Pizza, Sip Wine and Beer, Stone and Glass, and Sunnyside Up Kitchen. And we're planning to add comics and stuff and Battle Mage Brewing after the pandemic. So we'll, you'll see an uptick in new partners after the first of the year. And then we also work with Magic and there's, we listed all of the partnerships that are part of that collaborative.
Great. I, I had the president of the Chamber of Commerce approach me at the Grand Avenue Festival, wanting to set up a time with me to discuss like more or whatever other partnerships we can pursue. So I was going to meet with him probably later this month. Is that something you'd be interested in joining me for, Dara?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Where if you can just send me the date, I'll be happy to attend.
Okay, absolutely. Great. Any questions from anyone? Comments? Well, I think it's great that we're partnering with so many businesses on Grand Avenue specifically. I would be interested in seeing, you know, what else we can do outside of just like the very most, very local area, like getting out and about too. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to that meeting and for you to join me. Okay. Great. John.
Okay. I actually went out and bought a used handbook. And I have another one on order that lists for $150 and I'm buying it used for $17 and change. What I'm finding out is, unless it's very well hidden, California, the state of, does not have a library trustee handbook. Other states do. After reading this one, I guess I need to reserve judgment till I take a look at the other one, which is a lot more comprehensive, I think. I'm not sure we need one. But I'd like to take a look at the other one and I, I'd like to get everybody's input on this. But it seems to me we could use at least a checklist, if you will, or something like that for new trustees to make sure that they've covered all the things that need to be covered. Because when a new trustee comes in, we could very well have a new president, new secretary, and there may be assumptions on what they already know. That, you know, like the bylaws, attachment A on the LSNS contract. I mean, these are all things that, that the trustees should be aware of. And probably a lot more. So what I'd like to propose is that all of us just write down what you think a new trustee should cover. What, what were you missing when you came on board? And we can maybe come up with a list, take a look at it, see if it works out and make that something that either the president or the secretary, you know, that takes over the April of the year, would be responsible for making sure that a new trustee, if we had one, would be, would have to, you know, just check out and go through that, you know, you've read this, you've seen that, you've talked to these people. Just so that they're familiar with the job and familiar with the people that we're working with. That's, that's my thoughts.
I agree with you, John. I would hope that this wouldn't be voluminous where people just, it looks good, but nobody uses it.
Exactly.
I think the simpler and the most helpful will be something that, just the basics, kind of like you've just talked about. And it would be helpful to new people coming on.
Yeah, and maybe a couple of years, you know, if, if you were, we're up, we're up next April or March, I guess it is. You know, if we choose not to throw our hat in the ring again or, or we end up one way or another with new trustees for other reasons during the period. It'd be nice to have something, but we certainly aren't necessarily have to be in a rush to put this together. But.
Do you use SharePoint at all? Like is the, is the Escondido Library Board of Trustees, like we have a site or a page. Does that have any like backend SharePoint that we might be able, no? Okay, here looking at you like definitely not. Okay.
No, and I think when they updated the bylaws, it was very minimal verbiage based on LSNS, you know, coming on board. So really, I think that could be reviewed as well as, I think, I will reach out to other libraries to see who has a handbook, maybe just to use it as a idea, brainstorming activity or maybe a template if we really liked it. But I think this is a great idea.
Yeah.
I totally agree with what Ron said. If we come up with some, some voluminous thing that has maybe 30 or 40 pages in it of things to do, it'll, it'll never be used, unfortunately. But it wouldn't be used.
So, so my thought was more along the lines of like a Google Drive space that we could put our materials into. So that way, it's like easily accessible and shareable to future trustee members. And then we have documents, you know, that establish, like, for example, the Strategic Planning Committee, right? We could throw all of the documents from our committee or into that drive. And that way, people have a historical knowledge of what we have done. Because like you said, John, if, you know, both of us end up not, you know, continuing next year, like then that kind of becomes like this influx, right? And so we want to make sure that we're setting up whoever does come on board for success in that way. I think that we should try to make it as digital as possible, just with how things are going. I don't know why we would need a physical handbook. And that way, it's an established amount, like the information is established online and accessible to trustees.
But are you, do you have in mind more like an archives of things that have been done? Or, because I think John's talking more like a handbook, like orientation handbook and handbook as to what the library trustees board is and what, what they do?
I think you could incorporate an archive into your Google Drive. So you could have the bylaws. I mean, we all, I got a handbook from the city when, when I joined the board. But I think from like a more, if we're going to think about, you know, carrying the knowledge into the future that we have developed today and having, you know, background information available, putting it all into a Google Drive would, I think, be the best way to do it as opposed to just, you know, collecting the bylaws and the attachment A of the LSNS contract.
You see, you're talking more like a reference point than, than the handbook.
Yeah, both. So the drive would act as potentially the workspace for the, for the board moving forward. So it'd include all of the archive material, all of the bylaws and everything. And then, you know, it can be added to in the future.
Well, Ron shared with me a handbook that he was given when he started as a trustee.
Oh, my goodness.
It's a long time ago.
Yeah.
I think, I think people who have not been on boards, at least when I had board members come in the school district, people need to understand a couple of things. One is the Brown Act, which is very critical.
Absolutely.
Another is the fact, what we call the boardmanship, and the fact that people don't have individual powers that are board members. It's the board that has the power. Just some of those little basics and like a paragraph would be plenty, but it would help people.
Yeah.
Particularly the Brown Act, because you can't, you can't do certain things that maybe you, if you haven't been on a board, you wouldn't know that.
Right.
Yeah, I think when, when we came on board, the Brown Act was pretty well covered in the.
Oh, we got a lot of.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, but not, probably not so much in, in previous. But I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, there's probably something that each of us, over time, if you think about it, would say, you know, I wish I would have known this when I first started this job. And I think those types of things, and I'm, I would love to have it all on one page, okay? It's like, it's like a checklist. And, and some officer of the board would be responsible for making sure that the new trustee, you know, had a chance to read or if somebody, we wanted them to meet some, some entity, make sure they had a great tour of the library and knew how Polaris worked, that type of thing.
Yeah, and thinking about the Brown Act, Google Drive space probably is a little off limits. Yeah.
Debbie.
Okay, well, John, do you want us to come prepared next time with things we think should be on the list?
Okay, well, I would depend on all of us to input. Just send me an email with, even if it's just one thing. This is what I think a new trustee needs to be aware of. Or need, or the people they need to meet with so they can better understand their responsibilities. That type of thing. And I'll just put them together and we'll go over them next time.
Great. Thanks for bringing that up, John. All right, Dara, do you want to give your report?
Sure. So September was the first month where we had in-person programming, at least in youth services. So our all-inclusive art club actually had 33 attendees. And we, over the course of two baby lap sets, we had 33. Babies Storytime had 20 attendees. Pause for Reading had 42. Two Knights Realm chess clubs had 42 attendees. And one G-rated book club had eight. Teen Book Club had eight. And Teen Tastic Fun Time had 15. And Teens on the Go Movies had 11, which I thought was pretty great for our first month back with actual people in the building. People seemed happy about it. The parents were very excited. Our storytimes were spaced in family pods with masks. Our adult services hosted the annual succulent swap. That was outside and had 106 attendees.
Wow.
They had a movie matinee, which only had seven. Other programming included our hybrid programs, which was Escondido's Writers Group, 19 in person and 13 on Zoom, and two San Diego Comic-Con Book Club with five in person and 19 online. We've added a new librarian, Katherine Colvin. She just started in adult services. The library mural is nearing completion. The artist requested a slight extension. We had some rain. Plus, when she first started, the building was absorbing paint at a much faster rate than she anticipated. So it was a little more time-consuming than originally thought, but she plans to wrap up her work no later than November 13th. Additionally, in October, we had our Not So Spooky Storytime. And we had, I think, 142 people turn out for that. And for Diaz de la Muerte, we had 132. So some pretty good turnout there.
Would you explain the decrease from September and August of circulation due to summer being over?
Yeah, I will say typically August is always a slump.
I mean, it looks like it's really great. 42,393 versus.
Where are we looking? Here you can make stats. Okay, let me do your stats. You know, it's all I can, I'm guessing, but also back to schools.
Right.
Seems to pull some folks away. But usually, end of August, early September on any given year, seems to slow us, slow down a little bit.
Okay.
Did we have, and we only have one day closed in September, so I don't think that that's enough to contribute. But I, I can't say for certain.
Okay.
I'm noticing wireless sessions are growing every month. Any? You want to add any color to that?
Yeah, so I think, I think one of the things you can see.
From some of the numbers is our computer use was a little bit down in September, but it was pretty.
but it was pretty close to what it was in July. And I think what happened was, you know, in mid-July, we go to being fully open. So we've removed, we've added back all the seating. We've removed the time restrictions in the building. And so we're having more people spending more time in the building, either on their own computers or using ours. The September wireless stats, I think it's definitely due to the fact that more people are back in school, usually for universities and some of the high schools. School either starts in very end of August, beginning of September. So you probably have way more students in utilizing our wireless for their homework. And just adding to what Dara said about kind of the ups and downs between August and September. August was our first month back completely open, I think. And so July is going to be lower just because we were still at limited capacity for half the month. August is the end of summer reading. People are like finishing that program up. So you've still got people checking stuff out at the very beginning of the month. And then September, like she said, we're back in school. So you've got less of the younger kids, which historically and pretty consistently across the board, our highest levels of circulation are children's materials because kids are reading like stacks of 20 picture books or easy readers. And so when you factor in that most parents aren't taking their kids in as often because they're back in school and the kids are reading for school, not for fun as much, you're going to have a little bit drop in circulation.
Okay, I think the next item is to just go around the room and give an update or share something about the library. Merrick, would you like to start?
A few weeks ago, I went on Saturday morning with my biggest fan to the library and it happened to be Star Wars Day. So I got lucky twice there. So we had a lot of fun and you guys are doing a great job for doing that. I saw a lot of Star Wars figures. Some of them I didn't even know who they are, but he knew. So that was, that was good enough for us. So thank you and just keep doing what you're doing.
Ron?
Well, I, I actually was at the library today, but I really want to commend you on the mural that's going in. I think that's really going to enhance things about the library and the, in town. It's good for, a lot of people travel that road. And so I saw her up on a scaffold and it's, it's really, I really liked it. I was in the library several times this month and I'm, I've continued to be amazed at how many people are using it so effectively. I mean, it looks like a college library. The people are in there. There was 18 computers. I think we had seven people on it at this time. Then back in the corner in the teen section, lots of people were studying back there. And so it really looks like a very quality place to go and study. So I, I think that, I think that's good. And I'm anxious to see how you are going to rearrange that. You do? Thank you.
John?
Well, other than the normal audiobooks, et cetera, that I normally check out, I, I think we had an interesting time off for the first farmer's market. I'm not, I'm not sure what you, what was used as enticement for the second one to, to get people to come up to the, up to the table.
Candy.
Candy? Did it work?
I think so.
Okay. Because we didn't have anything and they, they, they kind of, unless they, you know, I've got some people that I knew to come over. They, they kind of looked at you and said, what, what are you trying to do? You don't have anything to sell there. What are you trying to do? So, so you had to get their attention and start the spiel and then that was okay. But having a, some type of lead-in like that was, would be useful, yeah.
Well, we used pencils, which worked really well at the Grand Avenue Festival.
Yeah?
Yeah, and Katie and I think it was April, they did a great job. It was the first time I really got to see like an outreach event and I thought you guys just did great. We had a patron come up and most of the time, like if they loved the library, they didn't want to take the survey, right? Because they didn't, they didn't have anything that they wanted to change. But we did get to speak to one individual who says he's in the library every day and he has used like the resume services and everything that you provide. And he was just very profusive about how thankful he was and how great our library is. So that was really great. Okay, well, great. I, if there's nothing else, there's nothing else, right? Okay, good. I will adjourn our Board of Trustees meeting. Adjourned.